Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening. Welcome to the Exeter Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting for Tuesday, December 19th, 2023. My name is Bob Pryor on the chair. Let me introduce the other members to my far-right Laura Montagno, to my immediate-right Teresa Page, to my far-left Martha Pennell, and to my immediate-left Esther Olson-Murphy. All five of us will be participating in the events this evening. However, I understand that one member of each... one member will recuse themselves from each of the two applications. Given that there will be less... there will be only four members voting on each application, the applicant has the right, without prejudice, to delay for another month. So if either applicant says, "I want a full board," you have the right to request that, and that would put you off until the January meeting. Where in order for a motion to pass, whether that motion is to accept, approve, or deny the application, would require three votes, requires a majority. So you would have to get three out of four instead of three out of five for an applicant to pass. So the applicant has the right to request a delay of a month. And so I'll leave... I assume some of you are applicants that are sitting out here. You'll identify yourselves at the appropriate time. So we're going to start with new business. The first new business is the public hearing, the application of Matthew Soper. I hope I pronounced that correctly, for a special exception for Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule 1, permitted uses, and Article 5, Section 5.2, to permit the conversion of an existing single-family structure located at 3 Portsmouth Avenue into a rooming and boarding house. The subject property is located in the C1 Central Area Commercial Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel Number 71-32, and this is ZBA Case 3023-18. Does anyone like to recuse themselves on this application?
Yes, I would like to recuse myself from this application.
Okay.
Oh, I have to leave my chair, too. Okay.
Step down. By recusing yourself, that also means you can't participate in the discussion.
But I can as a...
But you can stay. You can stay as a citizen of the town of Exeter.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you wish to continue with the four of us?
Yes.
Okay. Grumpy 1, Grumpy 2, Grumpy 3, Grumpy 4.
I don't know if he's grumpy.
I don't know. You'll have to ask them. They'll tell you if I'm grumpy or not.
All right.
And anyone who approaches the microphone, please identify yourself by name and why you're here.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Meredith Farrell-Goldstein. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Orrin Reno in Concord, New Hampshire. I'm here to stay with the applicants, Matt and Novena Soper. They're here to my right. I am available to answer questions anytime from the board, as are they both, so we're all happy to answer any questions you have at any point. I'll start with just a brief summary of what we're proposing here, and then I'll address the specific criteria from the zoning ordinance for this special exception application.
Okay.
So the property was purchased by the Sopers this past fall. It's currently a single-family home with four bedrooms. It's located in downtown Exeter in the C1 district, as was mentioned earlier. And in that district, there's a variety of uses that I'm sure you're aware are allowed. For example, retail, office space, bed and breakfast, hotels, motels, multifamilies, single families. There's a lot of uses existing together in that district. So we're here tonight requesting that a special exception be granted to the Sopers so they can use the building that is there now as a single-family home as a rooming and boarding house. So what does that mean? A rooming and boarding house essentially, and I know we have our definition, but what does it actually look like in practice? What it looks like is a four-bedroom home with each bedroom being rented out individually to unrelated individuals, in this case, targeting professionals in the area. So although it's a change in use, the day-to-day function of the home would not be changing. It's instead of related individuals living in the home, it's unrelated individuals renting out that space. So and as I said, this is a four-bedroom home, so four bedrooms for rent potentially. The Sopers are hopeful that this could provide an affordable housing option in the downtown area, great for professionals commuting to downtown businesses, as well as those commuting to Exeter Hospital. It's about a five-minute walk. So thinking about who this could serve, visiting nurses, other visiting medical professionals, even long-term medical professionals at the hospital, this could be a great opportunity for. The rent will be competitive with market rates, but it will provide another option in the downtown area for professional housing. The Sopers have done this before, just so the board has a little bit of history. They have a property in Stratum, New Hampshire, that is operating as this style of home, a rooming and boarding house, and they've done that for seven years now. It's worked really well, and it's provided a great, unique housing option for the community. Looking at the neighborhood where this is, we're confident that this fits well, just looking at the abutter list, for example. There's businesses, duplexes, multifamilies, a single-family home. There's a good mix here that we believe this would fit well with. So if the board has any questions, I'm happy to address those now. If not, I'll get into the special exception criteria and, of course, answer any questions after.
Thank you. Do you prefer to be called Ms. Goldstein or Farrell-Goldstein? How do you...
Ms. Goldstein, yeah.
Ms. Goldstein. Can you help me understand how the number of bedrooms versus... matches up with the number of residents?
Sure. So essentially, each bedroom would be rented out to an individual, perhaps maybe a couple, but based on the size, that would be the maximum.
Is there any way of guaranteeing that the number of residents would be restricted?
That's something we could explore. Looking at what's required in the zoning ordinance, really, if we look at each bedroom, it would be viewed as an individual unit, essentially. So what would be permissible there would be essentially what we... the guidance we have is parking, so one parking spot per unit. We could explore a possibility of limiting that. For us, just for our purposes of talking that out, thinking about space, really, a single person makes the most sense. Again, maybe a couple, but just going off size, that's what would make sense.
We have had incidents in the past in Exeter of properties being utilized in a much higher density than was appropriate.
Sure.
And while there's nothing particular in the zoning ordinances to restrict that, that is something that I would like to explore.
Sure. We're open to that.
Thank you. Any further questions, or should we hear the presentation?
That was the one question I had top of mind.
Okay. Do you want to go through the criteria then?
Sure, yes.
Thank you.
So the first criteria, of course, is just, is this allowed under the zoning ordinance? It is by special exception. Rooming and boarding houses are permitted in this district. The second piece is looking at the... whether or not this design, the location that's proposed, is good for public health, safety, welfare, and convenience, whether those things will be protected. Looking at that, we look to first what's there right now. It's a single-family, four-bedroom home, thinking about a family of four or five that may reside there with older children. The function of individuals residing there really would be the same day-to-day, so we don't have concerns about a negative impact to the public. When we talk about public welfare and safety, we often look at traffic and parking, of course. Here, the property is really nicely laid out for this use. There's a large parking lot in the back of the driveway that has enough room for at least five spaces, which is required under the ordinance, but additional... another parking space for a sixth vehicle, as long as you're not parking, you know, multiple large trucks or something there, easily that sixth vehicle could park in that back area. So there's enough room with that for those vehicles to not back each other in, no stacked parking, and actually have room to turn around before exiting the property. So we don't have any concerns about, you know, people backing out blindly into this abutting street or any traffic hazards that could cause. It's well laid out for parking here. The next piece is the third criteria, whether or not it's compatible in the zone. Like I mentioned in the beginning, this zone is really one that allows a variety of uses. They all work really well together. They create essentially a livable community. That's really what this property would be. It'd be a great opportunity for professionals to be able to walk to work and potentially walk to Exeter Hospital if that's their employer. It really works well with this area that already has businesses as abutters, multifamilies as abutters. We're confident that this fits well. Looking to the fourth factor, that has to do with adequate landscaping and screening. Here, we're not proposing any changes to the exterior of the home, and there's already ample landscaping and screening that's been done, so we're not proposing any changes. We're certainly open to them if the board believes it's necessary or helpful, but because, again, there's no exterior changes, we don't think that's necessary. The fifth criteria looks to the parking again, and whether or not we're creating an option that has a minimum impact on traffic. As I explained, this property is well-suited for this. There's significant parking. There's the option for vehicles to be able to turn around before exiting the property. It really provides a great parking situation that hopefully has no negative impact and really shouldn't. The sixth piece here is whether or not we comply with the applicable regulations for this district. We do. We don't have any concerns there. If the board has any... I'm happy to speak to those, but we don't have any concerns under that piece of the criteria. The seventh discusses potentially having the town planner or planning board review this. Again, we're open to that. We have talked with Mr. Eastman about this project. We agreed that because there's no exterior changes, that likely would not be necessary here, but of course, if the board would like us to explore that, we're open to that as well. The eighth criteria that we have has to do with whether or not the use will have a negative impact on the abutting or nearby property values. Again, that goes back to what this neighborhood is. There's a lot of commercial business, a lot of multifamilies, duplexes, single families. This would fit very well there. It would be a nice, new housing option for professionals in the area. Additionally, again, with no exterior changes being made, concerns about, you know, changes of appearance and how that may affect property values really aren't at play here. The ninth and 10th application criteria don't apply to our property. One deals with both storage. The next deals with the Tech Park District, which we're not in, so I won't address those. But just in summary, as I said, this is something the Sopers have done before. They're passionate about creating unique housing options, especially given the world we're in where housing is such a problem, so they're hopeful that this can be a new addition to downtown Exeter's housing options.
Thank you very much. You used in your application the word upscale housing option.
Yes, yeah.
And I noticed there are four bedrooms and two and a half baths.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
From the plan? So...
Three and a half.
Oh, I'm sorry. Three and a half baths.
Your plan indicates two and a half. It indicates that there are two full baths on the second floor and a half bath on the first floor. You need to be at the microphone.
Oh, come on.
Introduce yourself and...
Hi.
Yeah?
Matthew Soper. You had Soper right, so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
It has a three and a half baths, so there's three... two... three three-quarter baths on the second floor.
Okay. There's something called laundry here. Maybe that's it.
And a half bath on the first floor.
And a half bath on the first, so through... So it's not going to be individual bathrooms for each unit?
Eventually. Hopefully, I can do some renovation, have everyone have their own private space.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
I'm curious how the word gets out to Exeter that these spaces are available, or, you know, how you're advertising that if you're currently doing that in close proximity to town?
Sure. If you want to speak to what you're doing currently, I can just mention that I know Mr. Soper has reached out. When we're thinking about Exeter Hospital and like a visiting nurses program or something like that, he has started to explore those specific programs, but I'll let you speak to, you know, other advertising you're thinking of as well.
Sure. Craigslist is still working pretty good for finding tenants. There's also rent.com, and I've reached out to the VNA directly, and they are interested, so they just wanted me to follow up with them whenever we, you know, obtained approval to occupy.
Can you... So I understand from your attorney that you already have such a property in Stratum?
Yes.
What is the turnover?
Probably average six or eight months, something like that.
Do you require a minimum lease?
It depends. Renting room by room gives some flexibility with the individuals. Some people are interested in a year, some 16 months, so it can be customized. But for me, as landlord, the longer the better. It's less tenants and less turnover.
Is there a minimum that you set?
Oh, one month.
One month?
Yes.
All right. How often does that happen, that somebody only stays a month?
It's never happened. I've been through probably 50 or 60 tenants.
How long have you had the property in Stratum?
10 years.
Okay.
Yeah. But renting it for seven.
Okay. I interrupted you.
On the same track.
Okay.
I think that answered the question.
I have a couple of questions.
Please, Martha.
I'm just wondering how this works. Who keeps the common areas clean?
I hire a housekeeper.
So it's not... the housekeeper doesn't live in or anything like that?
Oh, no. No, no. So they would just... the housekeeper cleans the common areas, and everyone is responsible for their own living space that they rent.
But the bathrooms and the... there's a kitchen, I believe?
Oh, yeah. So some of the bathrooms would be private in their individual space. There's only, I think, two units that would share a shower.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you're not intending to live there?
Oh, no.
Okay.
But maybe in the future, but not right now.
Would you rent to an adult with a child?
Of course.
Okay.
Of course.
Is there any questions?
You guys got me covered fairly well.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Nothing else to add at this time. We'll go to public session. We'll listen to the public, and you'll, of course, have the chance to come back and address any concerns raised by members of the public.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So at this point, we will open it up to the public. Anyone who would like to speak regarding this application, please do so. Please approach the microphone. Give us your name and your location.
Hi. My husband and I, Colin Hatchard and I, own 4648 High Street.
And your name is?
Kit O'Meara.
Kit O'Meara?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, can you spell that, please?
O apostrophe M-E-A-R-A.
And you're at 46 to 48 High?
We live at 48, and we rent out 46.
Okay.
So we're owner-occupied. So our concerns for this residence are the fact that, first of all, town of Exeter doesn't allow A R B and Bs, and the reason, I understand, is because the public or the neighborhood doesn't want people coming in every six months, every week, every month. They want people who are bonded to the community. They have children in the schools. They care about the town of Exeter. They want to live here. So we do live in the area that they talked about, but the people that are our neighbors have schools, have kids in the schools. The school bus drops the kids off right in front of our house. I think it's lovely if they want to rent to professionals in the Exeter Hospital, but is this going to be a requirement of the lease agreement, that they have to be a professional that work in the hospital, that are going to have some kind of commitment to the town of Exeter? Now, if for some reason this is granted against a lot of the neighbors' wishes, my... our next concern would be, as this was built as a single family, what are the concern... what are the next things they're going to do to make this safe for the folks that live there? Because this is a four-bedroom house. This isn't a hotel. This isn't a bed and breakfast. So are there going to be sprinklers? They talked about landscaping and parking. There's going to be a sprinkler system, and there's going to be a fire escape, there may be fire doors. There's a list of things that there could be, that they should have there to make sure that the tenants are safe. Egresses. Egresses. The width of the corridors and the egress and the stairways, and fire doors for each of those four bedrooms. Also, they mentioned that there was plenty of parking, and so for one car. But if you look at the address, 3 Portsmouth Avenue, and its proximity to Auburn Avenue, there should be more consideration given to the fact that the entry and exit should be two cars wide, because it's a very busy area. And again, I understand that this is a commercial area, but not all commercial areas are or commercial requests are granted. Doesn't mean that, you know, a McDonald's can't be put there, and if that would be the case, or some kind of adult shop. I mean, just because it's in a commercial zone doesn't mean that it's good for the community or the neighborhood. And we don't... We believe that it's not good for our neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you. The one thing I do want to mention is that the safety issues that you addressed are not the purview of the zoning board of adjustment. It's strictly the use of the property. And that's something that would have to be taken up by the planning board under technical review, should we determine that that is necessary. So, I just want to... I'm not allaying your fears. I'm simply saying that's not part of the concern of this board. It is what... This is a board that concerns itself with the use. And in this case, it is the use as a rooming and boarding house under the special exception criteria.
So, does it go next to the... So, if you guys grant this, does it go next to the zoning or whoever to discuss the safety?
We are the zoning. It would go...
So, who's the go-to after this?
It would be up to us, and you've raised some legitimate concerns that should be addressed from my perspective. It would have to go to technical review, which is part of the purview of the planning board.
Okay, so it would go or should go?
Could go.
Could go. Great.
That's up to us.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? We're going to get into fights over the microphone.
We'll try not to.
All right.
Hi. My name is Nils Hanson, and I live at 56 High Street. So, just right down the street.
One S or two?
Uh, one. H-A-N-S-O-N.
All right, and you're at 56 High?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so my concerns are very similar. It does seem a lot like an Airbnb, which, of course, are not allowed. So, my question is basically, if somebody is not living there, how often is somebody checking in? How attached are they to the building and to the tenants in it? And then also, what is the check? Or what is the background check or any kind of check for the tenant living there? If you own a rental property or anything like that, there's a background check. There's a check on the tenant who lives there to some degree.
There's nothing in the zoning about checks. If somebody wants to rent without a background check, there's no mandate from the town that they do that. That's up to the individual property owner.
Right, but I totally understand that. But if I was renting an apartment or something like that to somebody, I would do a credit check. I would do some kind of check on that to make sure that this tenant is going to pay their lease, that they're a good tenant. And I understand that I would love... I agree. I would love more housing, more affordable housing for tenants, you know, for the hospital and whatnot. But honestly, hearing this, it doesn't sound like a tenant that we would get from the hospital. And there are a lot of people on our street, and there are rental properties. You're correct. But this is a little bit different. I don't think we can say that, oh, this is a commercial district, and this is... There's retail there. I think lumping in commercial and retail into this is different. Commercial and retail exist on its own. It closes at a certain time. I go to the grocery store. Excuse me. We all go to places in our area. This is outside of that. And I think it's a little bit unfair to lump this in to be like, oh, it's a retail. It's commercial. They're rental units. And this is different.
Okay. Thank you. We are sensitive to the fact that while this is within the C1 district, it immediately abuts on two sides, R2. We are certainly aware of that. Thank you.
Hi. My name is John Gromek.
John, I'm going to ask you to spell your last name, please.
G-R-O-M-E-K.
And you live at?
25 Forest Street.
25 Forest. Thank you.
Well, I'm the longtime former owner of Exeter Cycles Bike Shop.
Yep.
I'm the owner of the building currently. I've been retired for seven years, I think. And I would just... So, I'm across the street from this building, and I just want to say it sounds fine to me. I really don't have anything to add other than I don't see any problems with it. What I've heard from the representative and the owner sound fine. That's it.
Great.
If there were no comment, no negative comments, I would not be standing to speak right now.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? He who hesitates is lost. Tom?
Melissa Erren, 15 Prospect Street. And I also want to speak in support of the project.
How do you spell your last?
Oh, Erren. E-R-R-E-N-D.
Erren, and you're at?
15 Prospect Street.
Thanks.
So, a block over.
Yep.
I wouldn't have known about this meeting had it not been posted on a Facebook page when a letter was circulated about the project. So, I just felt it was my job to come here and speak for a lot of people who commented on that post and spoke in support of the project that many feel like affordable housing is in super short supply in Exeter and the surrounding communities. And typically, those are the people who wouldn't be able to find out about meetings like this. And it's very easy for the abutters and people who are in the neighborhood who find out about a proposal like this to come and speak out against it. But I think that there are so many potential benefits for people to take advantage of a situation like this when we see increasing rent prices. So, single-family apartments or units are increasingly out of reach for single mothers, for individuals. And this does provide an opportunity to provide more affordable housing, even if it is short-term, for travel nurses or other medical professionals. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your thoughts.
Hi. Anthony Zwann, Z-W-A-A-N, 7 Marlborough Street. Just a block and a half away. I'm not speaking specifically for or against, just making some observations and maybe some requests for the board to consider. You all know by my nature, I'm a bit of a skeptic. You know, I'm... Yeah. So, I'm sure that, you know, the applicant has all the intentions that they are representing. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, it's an application for use, and ownership can change, and rental occupants can change. So, that needs to be kept in mind for the board. So, I would just urge the board to be very specific in what it allows and what it doesn't allow, because, you know, the situation could change over time. So, I just encourage you to do that. This applicant is representing that there are five parking spaces on the property. I think historically, my observation has been that almost every application before the zoning board or the planning board tends to underestimate the amount of parking that is required. Well, it's probably too grand a statement, but, you know, it tends to be a problem and tends to be an issue. This property is in a really high visibility area. And even when it was a single-family residence, there was, for a fair amount of time, there were people that were parking on what I estimate to have been the town right-of-way, sort of kitty corner right on Portsmouth Avenue and the corner of that street. So, I would just encourage the board to really specify then that the occupants... The number of occupants in the building should be dictated by the number of legitimate parking spaces on the property and not on the town right-of-way, let's say, in the dirt patch between the driveway and, let's say, where the actual town right-of-way ends. I don't know exactly where that is, but, you know, usually the town has a pretty substantial amount of real estate on the sides of the road. So, given that there are five spaces for parking, I would suggest that there probably should be a limit of five residents for the building. Because theoretically, based on what's been represented, there could be as many as eight people in that building, right? So, and that potentially means eight cars. That's not going to work. So, that... I would just suggest that the board consider that. Length of stay. You know, wonderful representations are being made, but, you know, unless that is specified, then yeah, you do run into interesting questions about the difference between an Airbnb and a rooming and boarding house. That is interesting. You know, is it monthly? Is it daily? Is it hourly? You may want to specify that as to what you think is a reasonable minimum for a rooming and boarding house. So, those, I believe, are the areas where I think I can most specifically respond to the application. I think it's interesting that... I suppose there's not a requirement for hardship in a case such as this as opposed to some other applications before the ZBA and the planning board.
Hardship only comes up in variances, not in special exceptions.
Yeah.
It's not one of the criteria.
Yeah. But it is interesting to see these sort of trends lately of, you know, high-visibility properties being purchased. And then the use has changed very shortly after the purchase. It's kind of an interesting phenomenon that's happening right now.
Now, the other phenomenon that's happening right now is that we are moving toward more multifamily properties.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And I'm not... Again, I'm not for or against, but I just wanted to register that. And I used to run into this at the planning board, and it used to bug me when an application comes in and it was either inaccurate or incomplete. We just sort of, you know... We just sort of made a quick comment about that. And here, I'm talking about the bathrooms, for example. So, you could make the argument that this application was maybe incomplete or inaccurate. And so, a board would be justified in wanting to formalize that or even table the case. There's no... I never understood why we have to...
What table are you on?
I always, you know, it's... You know, there's a pressure to solve all these problems on the spot. But, you know, again, I'm just pointing out something that occurred at the beginning of the application. And so, maybe that needs to be formalized. I think I will leave it there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Would anyone else like to address? You don't need to raise your hand. You just need to stand up.
My name is Mark Harrison. I live at 60 High Street, which is your neighbor. And...
I'm sorry. What address on High?
60.
6-0. Thanks.
Question I had about parking and the parking lot. And to start off by saying, this sounds like time to take 10 pounds of stuff and putting it into a five-pound bag. The property wasn't designed to handle this kind of load. The parking lot, the picture that's shown on the map, doesn't have the spaces lined up in it and we don't know they're going to park. And so, then I come out to saying, how is this parking area going to be plowed? Where is the snow going to be put? If it's put up against the fence, the fence will last for two years at the most if it's not knocked over the first year. And having worked at 40 Portsmouth Avenue for a number of years, I know there can be a big pile of snow and figure out what are you going to do with it. The fence is a goner. Or the parking spaces will be goners, and you won't have enough parking spaces for that. And whoever planned out the parking lot, out the parking lot, is there actually enough room to turn and maneuver a vehicle? If someone comes in with a full-size pickup truck to rent for a couple of months, that's very nice, but they can't turn in the same space that a Chevy Aveo can turn in. So that's another problem I would have with the parking. And also, one thing that's been concerning with all of our properties is changing the gradient of the property and where does the runoff go? They've now paved a tremendous amount of the back of the area and they're asking for permission to use that as a parking lot. Did anybody study where the water is going to go from that, let alone where the snow melt is going to go from that? So that was another question I have. The noise level, people aren't speaking very much about that. I live across, I sleep on High Street, that side of our house. Somebody across the street had a very loud car, fine. Except for 5:00 in the morning, it wasn't quite so fine. I learned to sleep through it. Okay? But then they changed shift and they came back at 10:30, 11:00 at night. I've learned to sleep through that, as I've learned to sleep through the train whistle. But this is somebody that's a close quarters, a lot of people right around it, and somebody's going to have loud cars. So that's another question I have. And the question about renovating the building for commercial use, that's Planning Board, as you said, somebody else has to deal with it. A quick comment about the hospital staff using that as a residence. I've worked at the hospital for a number of years. And from what I knew of the visiting staff they have, the hospital housed them. It was the hospital's responsibility to sign contracts with the short-term employees to put them somewhere where they had very nice accommodations for a month or three or six. Their shifts can go from 5:00 in the morning until whenever or they could be working until 10, 11:00 at night. And they don't want to bother people coming in and out. They want to be able to get into the bathroom, do their business, and get to work. And having to share a bathroom with somebody else, I don't see that's going to work for hospital personnel. Exeter Academy takes care of their own faculty. I don't know who would want to live. I would not want to live and share a bathroom with somebody else I didn't know. Do I have a lock on my door? Do I have to lock it to go to the bathroom? Personally, I just wouldn't want to do that. I've never had to do it other than in college and grad school, but I would not want to do it again. And so those are basically my questions. I don't think this is an appro, it's a nice use, but parking is a major problem. And Dr. Swirin said, everybody kind of underestimates me. What happens if the landlord rents to a couple? And both of them have cars? And they rented two couples, that's four cars out of a five-car parking lot. What are the other folks going to do? Sorry, I can't rent you a room because I've already lost two spaces? Or are you going to say, you only get one with that, now where are you going to put your other car? In the bike parking lot? Bike shop's parking lot? Or someplace else's parking lot? On the street? The multi-dwelling on the next door to them? Where are you going to put the next car? If you have company come to visit, where are they going to park? There is no extra space. This is not built as a commercial building with extra spaces to allow for that. This was a house. So I'm against it only in the fact that I don't think it's going to be accommodating to the neighborhood the way the potential misuse or intensive use can be.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Would anyone else like to raise an issue?
Hi there, I'm Michael Volgarelis.
You're gonna have to spell that.
Phonetically.
Yep, go ahead.
It's V as in Victor, O-U-L-G-A-R-E-L-I-S, as in Sam. And I live at 55 High Street.
Thank you.
These are my neighbors. And I think, knowing my neighbors, and I won't speak for them, but I think all of us want affordable housing. I think we all think that's an admirable thing to do.
Want a what?
Affordable housing.
Right.
I think no one's against affordable housing. I think we have to remember, this is a single-family home. It was a rental. And it's not like it's being saved from something to become affordable. This could have been rent, could be rented out now. I think it is for rent now, or up for rent. And as someone who's lived in 16 cities and have a lot of experience with how real estate works around the country, I'm skeptical that professionals are going to move into this building. In my experience, most of us want to live in the nicest possible house we can, just at every stage of our life. When we're starting out, we try to get to the nicest possible place we can live and so on. I think professionals, if that's the term we think is going to live here, in general, are not going to want to share bathrooms and kitchens and living rooms. I just don't think that that's reality. I think if there's a couple of travel, the traveling nurses can get together and rent out a place together if they wanted to. They could rent out a whole house if they wanted to. These are going to be strangers. And again, I'm highly skeptical that nurses who are predominantly female, who are from out of town, are going to want to live with strangers who they don't have any say over who's in the next room and the comings and goings of people. So I'm just skeptical it's going to be professionals. The last thing I'd like to ask the board for is clarity on the precedent here. But I don't know if that's the right word. But when the attorney was speaking, she was using neighboring properties as an example of what should be allowed or what exists around there. I'm curious if this goes through and now we allow boarding houses, maybe we've allowed them all over and they're all over Exeter, I don't know about them. But we're taking a single-family home, making it a boarding home, a boarding house, or a rooming house. Is there anything that would stop me from using that as a precedent or all the houses on High Street becoming boarding houses?
Yes, absolutely. You're in R2 where it is not allowed.
Okay, unless I get an exception or rezoning?
It would have to be a variance at that stage, which is a much, much higher bar, which does require hardship. There's no other possible use of the property. This piece of property, if you look at the exact map, sits, as I said earlier, surrounded on two sides by highway and one side by the restaurant, which used to be a gas station at the corner. And everything else is R2, is R2 zone. Everything up Auburn Street, everything on High Street is all R2, where a rooming house, a boarding house is not allowed under any circumstances, except by a variance. They are allowed in the commercial district, which this property does. So there are lots of things that would prevent this
Got it.
being a precedent that could be used.
Got it. And that's good to understand.
It's based on the underlying zoning, which we don't set. It's voted on by the residents of Exeter, by the voters of Exeter.
Got it. So if the C district and/or things that are zoned differently are near each other, like all of our homes, we may not abut that property, but we're close enough that these will be our neighbors.
And as I said earlier, that is something that is very much on the mind of this board, which is the fact that it does, while within the C1, any change on this property could have an impact on the R2, which it abuts.
Yeah.
We're very sensitive.
I think it will. I'll just say one last thing before I sit down. The gentleman said that the average time in the other property is six to eight months. That doesn't sound like people who are going to be in the community and stay. It doesn't sound like professionals to me. And I think the number was 50 to 60 tenants in seven years. I've lived in Exeter for exactly three years. I know some of these people who live around me. I know a lot of the renters who live around me. The cars are the same, the people are the same. People stick around in that neighborhood. I can't imagine 60 people living in that home over a seven-year period. It will absolutely change the dynamic of the neighborhood, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sam McCarrker, 34 Auburn Street. So I just wanted to bring up the parking and some of the things were already mentioned from the abutters, but there was a comment that, you know, the Facebook thing and, you know, affordable housing, but yet the attorney spoke of the rates would be market rate. So the market rate is not affordable. It's just that simple. I mean, the current rates we have for rents in housing is simply not affordable right now. So you take that. There's a parking issue. I looked at the property. It's all asphalt. They just recently paved up and around the back. To a lot of people's points, you're not going to be able to turn around back there. Snow removal, it's going to have to be hauled off. The side of the house floods. You can't use the sidewalk. You have to go out into the street because on Auburn Street it completely floods because there's no drainage. I actually brought it up to the town in regards to needing another stormwater drain there or something, but there's absolutely a problem with that. It is going to change the character of the neighborhood. We've had someone from out of town come in and run an illegal similar boarding house and our code enforcer had to get involved and shut it down. I believe there's one other boarding house I'm familiar with and all the abutters in that area tried to buy the property from the owner and tried to renovate it and convert it into townhomes, but reluctantly, the absentee landlord, property owner refuses and it's just an eyesore in the area. They talked about bringing in professionals from the hospital, the attorney, and also from the academy, but yet there's no agreements in place contingent upon approval that they have it rented. I thought of taking my barn and putting an apartment up there as accessory dwelling, then possibly renting it to the hospital, but I would go there, speak to them, get some type of agreement. And they kept using the term professional, professional, you know, the hospital, the academy, all the right buzzwords. But again, I agree with everyone else. I don't see it as a professional place. I've got concern about transient coming in, coming out. It's two points that it is on R2 and it is going to change the character of the neighborhood and the community. And if they want, then, you know, go for converting it to apartments. Rent it out. If there's such a need, why isn't it rented right now? And if you do move to approve it, I strongly hope that you'll make it contingent, that they have to go to technical review. You have to look at drainage. You have to look at parking. You have to meet the criteria, all the fire, the safety. Also go in front of the Planning Board and make sure it meets all the requirements for that. So if that's what it's going to be, because it's on town water and sewer, and I'm not sure how much more land is on the side of the property on the Auburn side, but if they pave over that, aside from the drainage issue, there's no limit on the bedrooms. And I believe it has a walk-up attic, I'm not sure, but looking from just driving by, could that become another room? So you gotta, you know, who's going to control it? Who's going to oversee it? Who's going to manage it? And just make sure it stays into what it's going to be approved to do. I just think we're opening a can of worms.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else? Repeat performance.
Yep, repeat performance. Second time's better. Yeah, so Nils Hansen again, 56 High Street, Exeter. I do have one other question on the pricing structure and the lease structure. I'm guessing that there's probably no lease. So is it the customer can, or the tenant can essentially pay by the night and then just decide to leave whenever they want? And I know you said that the average tenant is there for six months, but could I just come for two days? Could I come for a day? Could I come for a week and then just one day decide to leave? And then how does that, I'm curious how that works. And then again, like I just back up what everyone else said, it does change the area a little bit.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Lynch, 15 Prospect Street.
Hang on.
Yep.
Name?
Brandon Lynch.
Okay.
L-Y-N-C-H.
15 Prospect?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I do live around the corner. As stated, this property is in the commercial district.
Barely.
Barely, but it still is. And it's surrounded by multifamily houses, similar uses. I'm in favor of this project. There are some issues that could be addressed with the safety and the drainage, but that's for the technical review. I am in support of this application for, as it stands, and I'd be happy to see this approved and used as applied for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One more thing.
Just because I'm just listening to what people are saying.
Yep, there's a mirror.
When they're saying it's surrounded by multifamily houses with the same purpose, that's not a true statement. So as my neighbor said, he's been here three years and he's seen the same cars, same families. And like I said, the school bus is right out in front of my house. So I don't see how someone is here for six months, three months, is going to be in the school system. So the multifamily houses that are around there have children in the school system. My husband had two children in the school system of Exeter until they graduated and went on to college. So I don't, he's owned the house for 12 years. So I don't see where having a rooming and boarding house is the same, they have the same interest as a multifamily. They're renting. All these families are renting their homes. There are children everywhere in the school system. That is not the same purpose.
Thank you. Last call.
Thank you. I'll address a few pieces here. I'll, I may skip around a little bit to hit everything. A few things to hit right at the beginning here, thinking about the idea of a multifamily, the lease. I do want to just correct real quickly. We did address earlier that the minimum lease would be a month. That's a requirement. As we've discussed, Airbnbs are not allowed here. Typically, under New Hampshire law, generally, an Airbnb is anything less than 30 days. That would not be an issue here. We can be crystal clear about that. This would be a true rental, the minimum lease in New Hampshire would be for a month. So this would be at least a month lease. As far as thinking about just other rentals in the area, again, although those properties are maybe typically wrenched out for longer, there's no requirement that there be a year-long lease. So that's just something to consider. Those could change tomorrow and be six-month leases, three-month leases, a variety of things. So this is relatively similar. Thinking again about how the property is being used now, when I was thinking about this myself, something I thought about was a single-family home with mom and dad and three kids, maybe one's in high school, one's community to college, one came home from college and is working their first job, you end up in a very similar situation to what we're proposing. And that would be completely permissible here. That's just how it helped me to picture it. Talking about the parking, the parking requirements that guide us are in the zoning ordinance, of course. They tell us what's required for this area for this use. That's five parking spots. I did mention the six, just to let the board know that that option exists there. It is there. And then, of course, you know, for example, if someone stopped by to drop something off, there's the parking spaces that could be used on the driveway to stay out of the street, so that there is room there. And the driveway and parking area expansion was done with the town's approval. A professional did it. All the correct permits were pulled. So that has been done in partnership with the town. So hopefully that eases some concerns that may have been raised. Thinking about, you know, again, the, sorry, I'm skipping around on my notes here. Oh, okay. So talking about the professionals, we've talked a lot about who would be living in this area. This is a unique housing option. I agree with that. But really, in today's day and age, this minimalist housing idea is very popular for young professionals. As we said, there's one operating in Stratum that's doing very well. It's kind of a proven model of this. Having the ability to have a livable community walk to downtown, walk to work is something very, very appealing to young people, but that they often can't afford. This makes that possible. There were also some comments made about, you know, it being rented now, the rental market to rent this out at a rate that would make sense economically would not be affordable to most families in the area. So I think everyone in the room agrees that affordable housing is an issue and that's something that the sopers are trying to help with, with this unique solution, rather than renting out at a very high rate to one family. The noise level was mentioned as well. Again, I encourage us to think about what a single family with three kids would be like. It's very similar. We're not talking about, you know, anything different, really. The function of the house would be the same. There was also a few comments made about this being commercial. I just want to make clear that this would still be a residential use. The home would be used by residents, be a permanent home for them. So, you know, thinking about hours, I think was mentioned, that's just not something we have to think about here. You know, some talk about the hospital use, other, you know, whether or not this would be appealing to those sorts of people. Of course, those things are not part of the special exception criteria, but, you know, we all heard about in COVID, the visiting nursing program, other visiting professionals in the medical field. This is very common. A lot of people rent out an extra room in their home to help bring nurses to the area, other professionals. So this is something that has become a reality and could be a great use here for the town. I will just check with the sopers and see if there's anything else they'd like me to address before wrapping up.
Before you speak with your client, I might suggest that you also discuss something that was raised by multiple people, which is the issue of the number of residents versus the number of rooms.
Sure. So like we've talked about, that's something we're open to the board, you know, restricting perhaps. You know, for example, we wouldn't want to limit it to maybe one resident per bedroom. So this could be an option for single parents. That's something that we'd like to remain open to. We're open to discussing it with the board. Perhaps there's a restriction on how many units can have more than one person. That's a possibility. You know, the vehicles being there, of course, wouldn't be an issue if we're talking about a child and a parent. I think that's just something we want to be careful of, making sure that we don't take away this option from single parents.
So I would be open to allowing any number of occupants that's legal. So as a landlord, I can't necessarily limit the number of, I can't say single occupancy only. You know what I mean? That's discriminatory. So I could say, you know, dual occupancy, double occupancy, or something like that, but limit the cars, if that would be something that would be a good compromise. I can certainly say one car per unit off-street.
So legally, you're not allowed to restrict the number of residents when you rent an apartment?
You can, but you're not supposed to say single occupancy, because then you're kind of discriminating against couples or a child, a mother and child, something like that.
Have you had discussions with the code enforcement officer or what the legal, if there is such a thing as a legal limit in the building?
No, but I don't plan on, obviously, I'm the landlord, so I can do the screenings, but I don't plan on renting to, you know, more people than the house can handle, of course. So in my mind, that would be two people per room, at a minimum. I mean, maximum, sorry.
Anything else?
I think that's something that could also be addressed in the technical review, you know, looking at fire code regulations, of course, as well.
Once the use is approved, then the cat's out of the bag.
Well, sure, but certainly, you know, looking at, you know, what the guidance could be provided with the technical review, I'm saying could just be helpful there, too. I understand your point, though.
Are there any further questions for the applicant before we close the public session? You all set?
I'll just mention one piece I forgot. They do do a background check, just to ease nerves there, and a full credit check as well. So those protections are in place.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. With that, we're going to close the public session and move to deliberations. You all are welcome to sit there and listen to us drone on for the next half hour, which is precisely what we're going to do. Hopefully, we won't be droning too much. I'm the only droner up here.
It's what we do best. It's what we do best.
It's what we do best. Okay, my friends, here we are. So we have an application that has a bit of controversy surrounding it. We have what I deem to be an incomplete application. And the application is incomplete in that it does not specify the number of parking spots. I'm not qualified, not only do we not have a plan that shows what the area is, we have photographs that have one car sitting in there, which appears to be a, I don't know what.
Minivan.
Minivan of some sort, a Honda. But I cannot attest to the number of parking spots. So I am frankly quite reluctant to sign off on anything where I do not know the, I mean, it's required to have five, one for each bedroom and one visitor spot per four bedrooms. So it does require, assuming that there's four bedrooms and only four bedrooms. And just to allay the fears of at least some of the applicants, the, any approval would be based on the plan as submitted, which shows four bedrooms. It does not show an unlimited number. It doesn't show five. You just can't add a fifth because you feel like it. It is based on the application as submitted. So with that as a preamble, would anyone like to start us off? If you have any questions? Martha, Esther, Teresa, questions? Martha?
Martha can go first.
Well, I tend to agree with you, Bob. I would like to know exactly where the bedrooms are in the house that are going to be.
Right.
And the layout, it's, how many bathrooms where they are and...
Another area in which the plan is not accurate, because the plan as submitted to us is pretty sketchy. It shows four bedrooms. There are four on the plan. There are four on the plan, um, and according to this plan, there are two and a half baths, yet the applicant has told us that there's actually three and a half baths, I don't know where the third one is. So another way in which the application is incomplete.
So I might suggest that, uh, what's the word I want to say? We, um...
Kick, defer?
Defer.
Defer a decision and ask the applicant to come back with a more complete application?
That would be my...
I think that in service to the applicant, should we request that, we also go further with this discussion in case there's other issues that we want to see addressed prior to any resubmission. Esther, Teresa, anything you would like to add at this point?
My concern is the lease amount, I understand that the state requires at least a month, but that is really not a lot of time. It's, it's the minimum to make it not essentially an Airbnb.
Correct.
I think I'd feel better if it was something like a six-month lease, I mean, I don't expect them to have a five-month, five-year lease in here, because a lot of times, this would be somebody who's moving to town, needs a place to stay until they can find someplace. I understand that, it's a wonderful thing to have people an option to have, but I do think a month is a little, it's going to have a lot of more transient population going through there than the surrounding neighborhoods would probably enjoy having.
And with a non-resident management, non-resident ownership, non-resident management, you also have the possibility of somebody renting for, as we saw with, I can't even remember what street it was on now, not the one near you, but there was another one down near the academy, which was rented long-term and then used as an Airbnb. So it was a year rental to somebody who was actually the parent of a PEA student, uh, who then ran it as an Airbnb when they weren't here. Uh, and so, once these things...
Get going.
Get going, they're extraordinarily difficult to stop.
Yeah, and while there is a need for people relocating to town...
Absolutely.
...to be here to look around, particularly in Exeter with the academy, we also have a strong demand for very short-term rentals, like one or two nights, and I think we've seen those crop up and be pushed to their absolute limit in places, and so, looking prospectively, keeping that in mind, that if the ownership were to change, whatever we put in place should focus on those concerns.
Very good. The applicant is sitting there listening to us, understands all of the questions that have been raised, not only by the abutters, but by the members of the board. I would suggest that we make a motion to, uh, defer the applicant, the application, to the next meeting, uh, to a further meeting, it doesn't necessarily need to be the next meeting, um, and that we would require, uh, a more complete site plan, including parking, uh, and an exact plan of the building itself. Plus, I believe some of the questions that are raised here need to be addressed. Did I just make a motion? I'm not supposed to do that. Would you like to make a motion along the lines of what I just said?
Yep.
Somebody?
I'm, I'm noting before I forget.
I don't know if I remember all of your conditions, but I'm good for the world.
More suggestions, don't you think?
Yep. Okay, I will move to defer the application of Matthew Soper for a special exception on, Soper, I'm sorry, Soper, uh, for a special exception per Article Four, Section 4.2, Schedule One, uh, to permit the conversion of the existing single-family structure located at 3 Portsmouth Ave into a rooming and boarding house until a further meeting, at which point we expect to review, um, a more detailed site and parking plan for the property.
Is there a second?
I second.
Moved in second, any discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Uh, four, zero, we're deferring until a further meeting. Okay? Thank you very much. Thank you to the members of public for coming out and addressing. There will obviously be another opportunity for you to see a revised application and further opportunity to comment on that application.
I don't know when next morning will be, because I said I only got notice a week before this meeting.
Check your mail.
I had to sign.
Right? That's because it's a legal notice and it has to be, you have to sign for it.
Let's say for a week or two weeks in a row or something?
It's also posted online, the schedule is posted online a week before the meetings.
I love it.
If you go on the...
Crown of Exeter.
Crown of Exeter website.
Talk to your neighbors. Talk to your neighbors. Whatever Tuesday this is of every month.
It's the third, third, third Tuesday of the month.
Yeah. Mine, too.
Okay, moving on. Welcome back!
Thank you!
It's Montag now.
Happy to be back. I didn't like sitting out there.
I like it better on the...
The application of Malcolm C. and Lindsay S. Sonnet. How'd I do on that one? Did I get it right? Not Sennet, Sonnet?
Sonnet.
For a special exception for Article Four, Section 4.2, Schedule One, permitted uses in Article Five, Section 5.2, to permit the conversion of an existing detached garage on the property of 1 Salem Street into a residential dwelling unit. Subject property is located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Taps Map Parcel 63-211. This is EBA Case 23-19.
I need to recuse myself from this since I live right down the street.
Thank you.
I'm going to go be your audience now.
Thank you, you're the audience. All yours, sir.
Thank you. All right, just to recap, I'm Malcolm Sonnet. My wife, Lindsay, and I live at 1 Salem Street. We're requesting a special exception for residential conversion, we would like to convert the space above the garage into a 750-square-foot residence. Proposed residence will be entirely within the existing footprint of the garage. This proposal requires an appeal to the zoning board of adjustments because residential conversions are permitted in the residential zone, R2, only by special exception. Uh, our home is located in established residential neighborhood that contains many two- or three-family homes, one of the abutting properties is a multifamily home, and more than seventy, or more than 45%, excuse me, of the homes on Salem Street are multifamily. There will be no negative visual impact as the conversion will take place within the existing footprint of the existing garage. There will be no adverse impact on street traffic as access and egress will be maintained through the existing driveway access point. Um, and there's plenty of off-street parking at the site. I'll stop there for questions.
So we have a sketchy site plan, there's no physical change to the footprint of the existing structure?
That's right, yeah, and then, and then, it is a sketchy site plan, not my best work.
No, no photographs, that's all right. So 34 by 26, I didn't work it out, that, so you can get 750 feet, square feet, on the second floor of that without, do you have to go up to do that?
So it already has, uh, it's a, it's a half-story above with a cathedral ceiling, so it's, there's a four-foot knee wall on the second story with a cathedral ceiling up to about a 12-foot peak. There's existing access through, on the right-hand side there, along the train tracks, there's a, a separate entrance and vestibule down in the lower right-hand corner of the garage.
Outside, exterior, there's exterior?
Well, exterior access, but the stairwell is inside, so there's a vestibule...
Ah, okay.
...inside that goes up to, um, second floor with a one-bedroom, one bathroom.
Oh, it's already there?
Kitchen, living, yeah.
Ah, okay.
Under construction.
All right. So this meets the criteria for accessory dwelling unit, right?
Yes.
Uh, only by virtue, well, I'll let you guys, yeah.
No, go ahead.
Um, it, so technically, we have a non-conforming lot, so that's where this is a little weird.
Thank you.
This would be a pretty straightforward ADU were it not for non-conforming lot.
Non-conforming lot in terms of the size available?
Only due to the road frontage. So I think technically, we need 100 feet and we've got 75. Uh, but we do meet it in terms of percentage of square footage relative, you know, open space to...
Thank you.
To living space.
We'd have gotten that, good.
By miles.
Okay. So coverage and everything, so the only way in which you're lacking is that you don't have sufficient frontage?
Correct.
Okay?
What, I'm sorry, what was the frontage?
Frontage is 75 feet, there's shown on the, on the map. I don't know if the cop has come through with that nicely.
But I'm wondering what the setback is from the street to the house, and then from the back of the garage to the property line, and the side of the garage with the door to the, um...
Yeah, that didn't come through, did it?
Fence.
So side setback is, uh, 16 feet.
From where to where, please?
Sorry, side setback, so from the railroad abutter?
Yeah.
From that property line, 17 feet, 16, 17 feet, and then from the rear property line, I want to say 26, 27 feet, so a couple of feet extra from the minimums on, on the side and a rear setback for an R2 zone.
And then the house from the street?
Existing house from the street, I'm not actually sure, this is probably, this is not well-done to scale, it's probably, well, it's probably about 25 feet.
Laura, did you have?
Um, it's shown fairly accurately on the...
I'm a little, I understand, it's a non-conforming lot, right, but the building is already there.
Correct.
So, does the, if they're not changing any of that footprint, do any, if it's already non-conforming, do the setbacks...
They do not matter.
They do not matter?
Yeah.
Okay, I wanted to confirm that.
The setbacks really don't matter, except that it makes it non-conforming.
Yeah, I'm wondering, because on the schedule for accessory dwelling units, the first additional item to the special exception is that the property and proposed use must conform to the dimensional requirements of a one-family lot. And I'm assuming that's on schedule through the R2 single family?
Yes.
And I'm just wondering if the minimum yard setback and, uh, frontage and rear and side, and I...
I guess, I, I mean, but if the, if it's already non-conforming and those built, I could see that would matter if they were trying to change the footprint.
This is not an accessory dwelling unit, this is a conversion of an existing detached garage, this is a residential conversion.
Okay.
So it does not come under the accessory dwelling unit, and it does not come under the Schedule One notes in 4.7.
Okay, okay. So it is a conversion...
Right.
...in R2.
Mm-hmm.
Converting it to two units.
Would you explain to me again why this is a conversion and not an accessory dwelling Did I miss something?
No, but I think I might have, I'm reading it carefully now, having said what I said, I'm reading it carefully now. Article Four, Section 4.2, Schedule One, permitted uses, okay? Article Four, Section 4.1, permitted uses, this is in, bear with us.
No problem.
We'll get there.
Lot of details.
Yes.
This is R2, special exception, residential conversions and accessory dwelling units see notes one and two at the end of this article. Okay, one and two at the end of Schedule Notes. Conversions. So this is a, this is scheduled on page four dash seven, this is Schedule One.
But isn't...
Which is a conversion.
But isn't it...
Existing residential buildings, principal residential structures as well as accessory structures into not more than four dwelling units, provided that... The application does not for an accessory dwelling unit, does not say that, does not use that language. Uses the word conversion.
And that's because some, well, and I, this is where I may be mistaken, but somewhere in those guidelines, particularly for accessory dwelling unit, there was the requirement that the lot size meet that shown in table at blah, blah, blah.
Which is what Teresa just mentioned.
Right.
So you do understand that the criteria that we're going to have to go through...
Is the conversion.
Is the conversion.
Exactly.
Have you been through all of these?
Yep, exactly.
Okay. So this is a conversion on four, page four dash seven.
How did you come to that conclusion, again?
Because that is the, that is what the applicant has requested.
Okay, he's requesting it.
That's what the application states.
Okay, got it.
Which means that, for example, that this could, the criteria slightly different. The number of spaces shall comply, which it appears that it does, minimum lot size, such that each dwelling unit is provided with 30% of the minimum lot size per unit required for the district, you've been through the calculation?
Yep.
You meet that criteria?
By a long shot, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I don't have that number in front of me, though, it's, um, let's see, we can probably come up with it together, based on... So the lot size is, you know, 14,800 square feet.
And what is the requirement for minimum lot size per unit required for the district? You're in an R2, minimum lot size, do you have municipal water and sewer?
Yep.
24,000 square feet. So 30% of that would be 18, so you'd need to have 36,000 square feet, how much do you have?
Wait a minute, say, say that again?
R2, single family, sorry, R2, I read the wrong line, R2, single family, is 15,000, so you would need to have 30% of that, which is 3,000.
Right, 3,000 of square, of open...
Per, and you've got, what's your lot size?
Lot size is 14.8.
Yeah, you're fine.
And, you know, existing dwelling of 2,100, and then this...
Right.
Roughly...
Right.
Uh, 750.
So each of the two units would be provided with 30% of the minimum lot size per unit required for the district.
Right.
Got it. The structure has been a residence for a minimum of 10 years?
Oh, yes.
The home.
The home has, yeah.
Salem, yeah.
Yes, it was there when I went, was a kid.
Martha, what are we going to do when you're not on the board?
That's only eight years ago, so...
I'm sorry? I said, what are we going to do when you're not on the board to give us the timestamp on these buildings?
Oh, you'll probably be very happy.
Was it still purple back then?
So...
Minimum of 20% open space? Yes.
Yes.
Uh, you understand criteria E, one of the dwelling units shall remain owner-occupied.
Yep, exactly, we've got no plans to move. We're owners.
That becomes part of the deed, that becomes part of the property, so...
Correct.
Should you sell the property, it has to remain owner-occupied.
Right.
One of the units.
Yep.
You could move into the second.
Sure.
But one has to maintain...
Yeah, we fully understand that.
For, forever and ever. We may require planning board review, um, three or more must be reviewed.
But that doesn't affect this?
No. We don't need expansion of their, not asking for an expansion of the existing structure, and septic has to be, provide there's no septic.
There is, that's right, it'll, it'll tie into the...
Town. You're not on septic, you're on town, water and sewer. Okay, so you have been through the Schedule One criteria, and we've now just been through them.
Yeah.
And we're doing this because the only person here who's a member of the public, would you like to address the board?
I would love to.
Really?
Sure.
Okay.
Take the microphone.
Why not? I'm here, I'm listening.
I'm Esther Olson Murphy, I live at 18 Oak Street, right down the street, I have no problem with their plan, they've done a very nice job adding that second floor onto the garage, we've been watching it happen, it fits the neighborhood perfectly, it's exactly the kind of conversion you'd want to see in a residential neighborhood, put an extra housing unit in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Esther.
Thank you. Rebuttal?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I'm quite proud of our work, yeah, made it look like an old New England barn.
Okay.
Intentionally, um, you know, yeah, I'm not sure what else to say.
Okay, so you've done the work and now you want to get permission to use it?
Right, I mean, the, you know, it's very much an in-law apartment and, you know, we want to have the option to rent it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, fair enough. Good. Are there any questions for the applicant? Sit down.
All right.
You're good. I see absolutely no reason, we've marched through the criteria that would be of concern, which are the... the criteria that would be of concern, which are the conversion criteria.
Yep, sorry.
And we've met all of those, and so I have absolutely no problem with accepting a motion on this property. Ms. Montagno, do you, I saw you reaching for your paper.
I will be happy to.
Thank you.
I move to approve the application of Malcolm C. and Lindsay S. Sonnet for the special exception per Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule 1, permitted use, and Article 5, Section 5.2, to permit the conversion of an existing detached garage on the property at 1 Salem Street into a residential dwelling unit.
So moved. Is there a second?
I will second.
Moved in second. Is any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Four zero. You're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for making it easy.
Appreciate it. Thanks for waiting us out.
Yeah.
Would you like to rejoin?
Thanks for the tech assistance.
All righty, righty. So, we have an interesting thing here as far as the minutes are concerned.
Not sure that's the word I'd use.
I'm not sure that's the right word either, but it is what it is, what it is. We almost had it this evening, too, gosh sakes. What happened, of course, was, well, we need to get through October first. So we have myself, Esther, Martha, and Laura.
Mm-hmm.
So the four of us can vote on the October minutes.
Just to note, I recused myself, so I will
From that meeting.
From that meeting.
From that meeting and
From the entire meeting, both applications?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'll be quiet.
Okay.
Therefore.
I, as usual, had no comments on the minutes. Anyone else have comments on the October 17th, 2023 minutes?
I do not.
Nope.
Motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes as written for the October 17th, 2023 zoning board of adjustments meeting.
Second.
Second?
Moved in seconded. All in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. October 17th, approved.
Could I just ask a question?
Please.
I was just wondering, under other business, we had that request for rehearing by Aaron Jefferson.
Yep.
Okay, and we said, no.
Correct.
Has he done anything? Has he appealed?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of. I've not heard anything about any, anyone coming back.
Okay.
I believe there has been discussion with the planning office about other ways of utilizing that property, other than this.
That's the small machine shop?
Yeah, the garage use, the
Yes, great.
Shop garage.
Glad to hear that.
Out on Kingston Road, yes.
Glad to hear that.
No, I've, I've heard that it was, it's being discussed, but not with a different use.
Nice.
Okay.
Okay. I'm not, I'll be honest with you, I really don't know how to handle this. This is the first time I've ever run into this. What happened is that whoever was working the back room that night heard us say, we're gonna go, we're gonna go out of public session, and if you're at the select board, that implies private session, where they turn off the mics, because it's no longer a public session, right? And so they have private sessions where they discuss personnel matters and that sort of thing. And whoever was working that night thought that that's what we were doing and shut the mics off, shut the recording off. So if you go to page
I think it's line 3.
Line 385, Mr. Pryor closed the public session and the board entered deliberations. 20 minutes were not captured. So that is all of our discussion plus the first three variance criteria. There has been, we have a record of all of the public testimony, we have a record of our vote, we have a record of our decision, but we do not have a complete record of the discussion. As of today, or as of last week, there had been no requests for the minutes, and there had been no indication that there would be a, a challenge of our decision or an appeal of our decision. Frankly, I don't know how we could recreate 20 minutes of this and three minutes of the next application.
Why don't we just say that, that we don't know what to do? There's been no appeal? So, is it, and it's been 30 days, right? That's how long they have, is 30 days to appeal?
It has not been 30 days. Today is the
19th.
19th.
Well, there's been no request for the minutes.
There have been no requests, but that could still come in. But I, I don't see any way of recreating.
I don't think we should.
And, and I don't want to simply start talking because that's fallible human memory.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. Oh, I agree, so
So I think that we do not have a choice but to look at the minutes as they exist. So there's line 385 here, and then in the second application, the same thing happened, except for a much shorter period of time. I believe it said three minutes?
Yep, line 653.
There it is, line, thank you, line 653, closed, Mr. Pryor closed the public session and entered into deliberations. And so, three minutes of the meeting were lost, but that was, that was just discussion amongst us. This was, that was the case where we, we heard three different, we made three separate decisions on the, on that property. And this was simply the, the first of those. But we have the discussion, and that one was approved. And if there was a question, it would have been on the third, which is the one that we denied. And there was no, so I think we have to simply accept this very complicated set of minutes for what it is, and I don't think we can do anything else.
I mean, what's the worst-case scenario? It gives them grounds to
There would, a rehearing
A rehearing.
Requested.
Right. That's the worst-case scenario, right?
Right. You can request a rehearing. A request for a rehearing is generally based on there was new evidence, or there was a factual error made. There, there may be new evidence, we don't know that or not. We can't say that until the 30 days have passed. Was an error made? We don't have a full record of our discussion, so I think that we would have to grant
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Or consider granting
Right.
a request for a rehearing, which would require re-noticing all the members of the public, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I think we can impute, because it was a variance request, that we determined that the first three criteria were met.
Restate the beginning of that?
That because it's a variance
Right.
and each of the criteria needs to be met, that we can impute that
The first three were
the result of our discussion was that the, the criteria
Correct.
were met for the first three, even though that was not
Even though that's not, even though the discussion is not there.
Yeah.
Exactly. We can, we can make the valid assumption that those criteria were discussed and met.
Right.
Correct. Very good. Does anyone have any comments on these? So that would be me, Esther, Teresa, and Martha, again. The four of us would vote on the, on those minutes. Do you have any questions or comments on the minutes as presented?
So what are we going to do?
We're gonna accept the minutes or, or not accept the minutes as submitted. We're not gonna attempt to fill in those blanks because we can't, number one, as Teresa's correctly pointed out, what's missing in the first application, the 20 minutes, was the discussion of the first three variance criteria, which we must have agreed that they met those criteria fully, because there's nothing, because we approved the application. So while the detail of the discussion is at, has been lost.
Oh, okay.
The result of the discussion is valid, which is that we
Yes, so obviously, yeah, okay, gotcha.
Do you have any?
Nope.
Teresa, anything on the minutes?
No, I did not. No, I did not. I
Okay.
could not find
A motion to accept the meeting minutes for November 21st as submitted.
I'll move to accept the meeting minutes of November 21st, 2023, as submitted.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved four zero. All right. No further business. Motion to adjourn, please.
I will move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.